Good evening, everyone, or good afternoon. I'm going to call to order the special meeting of the Board of Directors of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District for Tuesday, September 2nd. And we'll start that with a roll call from the clerk, please.
Director Nicole Wilchire.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Robert Ooten.
Here.
President Michael Schaefer.
Here, thank you. This takes us to the second item on the agenda, which is public comment. This is the time set aside for folks in the audience to make comments to the Board of Directors on items not on the agenda, items that are within the purview of the Board of Directors. And we do have one request, Ms. Lester. If you would take the microphone, please.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you to the district, to the general manager, to the staff, also to the board. But I understand that over the weekend, Costa Mesa Sanitary District was honored with three very prestigious awards. And I can't obviously speak in great detail about those, nor do I think it's my place. But I just wanted to acknowledge staff for all their hard work. They really do have a heart for what they do. And they take pride in their work, and it shows. And so I just wanted to congratulate everybody for the group awards for the district and also for the recognition for Caitlin Tran, who is the finance manager and was named Staff Member of the Year. I think it's incredible to even be considered for that. You already have to win several other things to be considered, and she did that. And so I didn't see any of that on your agenda, which I know it couldn't be because you didn't know when the agenda came out. But I just wanted to acknowledge it and say how impressive it is and how exciting it is to see our district doing so well, and thank everybody for their hard work.
I think the board would concur with you. The award that Caitlin received is the California Special District Association Staff Member of the Year for the state of California. What's notable, Caitlin absolutely far and above deserved that award. And when they were reading her list of accomplishments, there were like 700 people in this ballroom, and you could see them all going, you know. But what's notable, I was going to say, is Caitlin is not the first CMSD staff person to get Staff Member of the Year. We have two of them sitting right here. So Caitlin becomes the third in recent years. That would be Gina and Nalani. But thank you, Sue, we appreciate that. Okay, seeing no other public comment, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting.
Mr. President, there were two other written public comments that were received via email. They are before you, but were also disseminated to the Board of Directors via email earlier today.
Okay. And we all have copies of those, so thank you. Let's go to item C, probably the biggest reason that at least several of you are here. And our item under consideration is the appointment to replace Arlene Schaefer, who retired from the Board of Directors on August 1st. And we have three candidates for that position. Steve Friedman, Sue Lester, and Cheyenne Wright. And a little bit of groundwork on how we're going to handle this. And if I miss something, Madam Clerk, please. We are going to interview each one of you individually here in the room, okay? Those interviews are open to the public. However, it's up to you whether you want to stay here or not. We've made arrangements for the conference room to be open. So for the two that aren't being interviewed, if you'd like to go in there while we interview one of the candidates, we'd encourage you to do that, or ask you to do that if you so choose. By virtue of your name being on a piece of paper and going in an official CMSD ball cap, we are going to pick the order of how we do the interviews, okay? So the clerk has put it on my shoulders to draw the names. Okay, number one candidate will be Sue Lester. It's two of them all.
Oh, sure.
Otherwise, the other two won't know. This is kind of like the Miss America pageant where they announce, they never announce the runner-up, do they? Number two will be Cheyenne Wright. And Steve, that makes you number three. By virtue of, you're the last one left. So, okay, we will conduct the interviews, the four of us, and let's get started. Do they need to be at the microphone? Can they take the microphone out of that? Or they can sit with the microphone? Sorry?
It's being videoed.
Okay, so you're at the, you're at the board. Steve, Cheyenne, if you'd like to excuse yourselves, the conference room is right there. And then we'll send in the thugs to get you when it's your turn. Thank you, guys. Okay. Hang on, Sue, just one second.
It's okay, before you start, I brought copies of my life story. If you guys didn't have a paper copy in front of you and would like one, it's everything that was already submitted online and nothing new.
I think we all have them.
Okay.
I appreciate me doing that.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. We're going to ask you questions kind of rotating amongst the four of us. So the first question I get is, why do you want to be on the Board of Directors of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District?
I've served on the Citizen Advisory Committee in various capacities for the last seven years. And I believe the sanitary district has so many moving parts. And the infrastructure, the things that the sanitary district controls really are critical to the health and welfare of the community. And I think it's one of those things where people just expect it, everything to work properly until it doesn't, and then you hear from them. And learning everything that I've learned over the last seven years, I know how important it is to be educated on the procedures and the activities at the sanitary district, and what a detrimental effect it can have when you have people in charge that don't know what they're doing or they don't participate. And so I feel I'm ready to take that next step and contribute at a higher level.
Bob?
Sue, what are your personal objectives or goals for serving on the board? And what do you hope to contribute?
Kind of an expansion of the first question, and I think I touched on that a little bit in the questionnaire that you set out. I'd like to see the district continue on the path that it's on with tried and true policies, things that work, but also take into consideration new technologies, new ways to be even more efficient, to cut the overall costs at the district. I'd like to participate in keeping ratepayers' rates as fair as possible and as low as possible. I'm concerned about our landfills filling up, quite honestly. And that's going to probably happen with our local landfills in the next 10 years, at least it's projected to. And there's going to have to be a reasonable financial solution to handle that, and I'd like to be part of that. I have a lot of ideas. I think my personal experience with human resources and loss prevention and overall operations makes me a good candidate to continue to contribute in different ways to the board. And I want to pursue that. I have nothing but the best of intentions for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, and I think I could be of value to the board. And so I want to pursue that opportunity if it's available.
Thank you.
What does good governance mean to you?
Good governance, to me, means first and foremost representing the people that you were elected or appointed to represent and doing that in the best of your ability while being an advocate for the organization that you're governing. To set a reasonable mission, vision, core values, uphold the ones in place that are already working and make sense, to be an advocate for the sanitary district in this situation, but also be an advocate for the public and dance that very thin line on equal concern and responsibility for both as it relates to setting law, following law, setting policy, following policy, fiduciary responsibility. There's a lot involved in that, and I believe good, somebody who governs the way they're supposed to, cares about the public and the entity that they represent equally. So for me, that's what good governance is.
So, understand the part of it, the good government, what happens if we don't do good governance? What, which, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. What should happen to us if we violate that good governance philosophy or procedures or whatever?
The district suffers. The ratepayers suffer. And if you violate laws relating to that, then they should be punished by the fullest extent of the law. And that does not happen a lot with elected officials. And quite honestly, I'm curious as to why.
I understand. Okay, Art, I think you're.
Okay, Sue, what do you believe are the most important personal qualities and values a board member must possess?
I think a board member, well, I think this is true for everybody regardless of the situation, but I think you have to have integrity. Your word has to be good. You have to be fair. You have to study the issues that come before you with an open mind and learn as much as you can and ask as many questions as you can to make the best decision you can to serve the public, the greater good, and the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. Failure to do those things is really a failure, I think, in terms of, you know, being a board member. You have to be worried about finances. You have to, you know, support everything that's happening here. You have to keep things running, but you have to stay within a budget. You have to stand behind your expenditures, and you have to make sure you have the right people in the right place at all times, which means you have to be good to your employees. You have to have somebody in charge that you can trust and that trusts you, that you can guide through the process and, you know, learn from them as much as they learn from you.
What time, what kind of time commitment are you able to make? And what are your expectations for the time required for the board?
Well, I know the board meets generally, depending on how the days fall, there's usually two board meetings a month. There's study sessions, there's special sessions that pop up like this one that you have to be, you have to accommodate the time for. I also think that there's a significant investment in the community in terms of time and events and other meetings that you should attend and/or that a board member should attend, events that they can attend to broaden the reach in the community. I, my time is, for the most part, my own and controllable. I'm the primary caregiver to somebody in my family, and I take them to all of their appointments, but I also make all their appointments. And as long as I have a reasonable notice on what's happening, I can usually jockey my schedule around to accommodate just about anything. So my personal life wouldn't infringe upon, or my professional life outside of here wouldn't infringe on my duties at the district, should you appoint me.
So, in your opinion, what do you believe are the most significant challenges we have as a district? What threats do we have and what opportunities do you think we have?
I think in terms of threats, I'll start with that one. We live in a world where all bets are kind of off, and bad things happen. Bad things happen in places where you don't expect them. So in terms of infrastructure and reserves to handle natural disasters, shootings, bombs, there's the potential for a lot of bad things to happen. And I think that the district has to have a strong plan for that. I also think you need to make sure your reserves meet the requirements for those potential threats. With escalating prices and inflation, that may be something that needs to be revisited and increased. Challenges, I think, really keeping the rates down while being able to provide the necessary services and functions that the district provides. I've said this before for many, many years. I think pursuing tiered rates for ratepayers, and I think you guys are getting ready to look into that, I think that would be an incredible tool to maybe inspire people or kind of push them in the right direction of wanting to limit their solid waste. If you produce less solid waste and you have a smaller can and you pay less money, that encourages people to make better choices. I think you have to be aware or, you know, continue to make a priority looking down the road at the bigger picture in terms of what if, you know, the landfills eventually are going to fill up. And I know our local, our two local ones in Brea and Irvine, I believe, are projected to fill up sometime in the 2030s, at which point we have a lot of solid waste we have to get rid of. Where do we do that? It either has to be trucked or trained or sent somewhere, and I know that that isn't an expense the district can absorb, and that's going to have to be passed down to the ratepayers. So I think, you know, that's a concern. Was there another one? I think there were three things you asked me. Did I cover all of it?
Opportunities, what opportu, you covered that.
Okay.
No, I think you covered everything.
Okay. Yeah, because I think opportunities, you know, you have what you do great, and it works, but you always kind of have to keep an eye out for new technology, new ways to be more efficient, new programs to, you know, save money, or ideas to extend the life of, you know, pipes and trucks and, you know, all the assets, all the things you guys are taxed with taking care of.
This is going to sound like a strange question, but as you know me, you have an extensive volunteer history.
I do.
Why are you a member of the Living Desert?
Because I love animals. My family owned a condominium in Palm Desert for 25 years. And I became a member there when I lived there because I loved animals and I loved the idea of what they did. But most importantly, when I was there in the summertime, you can go in really, really, really early before the park opens, and you can walk the park when it's not 120 degrees. And you can kind of spy and see all the things, you know, that the doctors do with the animals. And it's really a safe, beautiful place. So I always try to support places like that, but that specifically, I am still a member. I don't go, obviously, as much as I used to because we don't own a place out there, but I figure the four or five, six times I go a year, it's totally worth it, and it supports good cause.
I happen to be a member as well.
I, yeah, okay.
And it's a perfect place to take grandkids. They get to feed the giraffes and do all that stuff, so.
We actually have a beautiful event there during the holidays where they decorate the whole place. It's absolutely magical. So I would suggest to anybody that finds themselves in Palm Desert area during the holidays to go, it's absolutely beautiful.
I think we, we've done our questions that we had set forth. Do you have any questions for us? That we can answer?
I do actually have one question. When all the paperwork out on, went out on Friday, there were five candidates, and now there's only three. Are you able to answer why?
Two of the candidates don't live in your division.
Oh, well, that'll do it.
We, we have that specificity to our offices, yeah. You have to live in the division you represent. So that's why there's only three.
It's really the only, the only question I have for you guys.
Any other questions for Sue, anybody? Thank you.
Of course, thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Cheyenne, that'd be great, thank you.
Bring your mouse.
It's sitting on my desk at home. Hey. So what we're going to do is ask you a series of questions. All three candidates are getting the same questions, although we may diverge a little bit and ask some things and obviously invite you to ask. I'm going to start, and then we'll jump around a little bit, okay?
Sounds good, thanks.
So the first question is, why do you want to be on this Board of Directors?
Well, if you haven't, if you don't know me, I'm Cheyenne Wright. You've probably read a little bit about my bio. I'm a business owner in the city. I have a background owning software companies, and now I own a clothing brand based here in Costa Mesa. We have a warehouse and a store here. Also, a big part of my background is, a couple of years ago, I got really involved in the Mesa Water District Board. So that's actually where I fell in love with our public services in the city of Costa Mesa. I also have been involved with city council, and I'm on the Parks and Community Services Commission. So I feel like all those roads have really naturally led to my passion and involvement in the sanitary district. I did run for the Mesa Water District Board three years ago. I knocked on 2,000 doors, and it was one of the best experiences professionally and personally that just, it deepened my love and understanding for specifically District Five, so predominantly East Side and a portion of West Side as well. And I think that's also where I learned a lot about residents' perspectives on these utility services that we offer, and honestly, how little they know. And so I have just continued serving on these commissions, on these advisory boards. It is, it's a passion of mine, but it's also where I really feel that my professional skills translate and flourish and are really like a gap in boards and commissions. So that is kind of what led to my journey of applying to this role.
I'm just curious, is Basket Case the name of your clothing line?
Yes, the brand is called Basket Case Gallery. It's sort of, I did not name it, so I'm the, I'm more on the business side. I oversee our production, our finances. It's a small company, so we wear a lot of hats. But yeah, it's, the name comes from the notion that many great artists in history were crazy. They wore basket cases. And so a lot of young people that resonate with our brand identify also as basket cases. And yeah, I think we actually are a really good picture of people, creatives, that come to Costa Mesa as young college students. We fall in love with this city. We start all out as renters, and then we find out we want to start families here, start businesses here. We have really tapped in, my co-founders and I, we've really tapped into the local, like, business owner community, restaurant owners. Really proud to call Costa Mesa the home of our business and, of course, our private residents as well.
Cheyenne, what are your personal objectives and goals for serving on the board? And what do you hope to contribute?
So my personal goals, or what I would hope to contribute, I think could even be likened to what I feel that I've contributed to the Parks Commission, to working with the mayor and city council, and even in my run for the Mesa Water District Board. I think that I bring a new perspective to a lot of these agencies and the services they offer and how we are communicating with residents. I also often find that, often, I'm one of the only members of the public of my demographic. And so I think it's really important to have young people that have tech experience, that have small business experience, that have young families in the city. I feel that that voice is typically lacking in those rooms, and it just so happens that this is what I like to do for fun, right? So I'm really passionate about bringing my professional intellect, my operational experience, my project management experience. I feel that I'm really good at cross-functional collaboration as well, which is so needed in our city because we have so many different entities that don't, you know, organically always overlap, even different electeds that may not cross paths all the time. So I think my, like, personal contribution that I would want to bring to this board is that I do know and I own that I have a really unique background that I think applies very efficiently, whether it's in our CIP process, the budget oversight, the collaborating with the other entities of our government and the other elected officials and commissioners, whether it's getting creative about how we're communicating to residents and young people and leveraging social media or our app. I think that I have a lot to offer, and I, I'm a very fast learner, I'm very inquisitive. I, I think another benefit of being young is you're really open to learning, and I love sitting down with staff members, engineers, and just being walked through every single process that I'm okay with saying, you know, I don't know everything, but I think I can glean knowledge from those who do know everything and contribute to the board discussion in, you know, a conductive way, so.
Thank you.
What does good governance mean to you?
So in, in being on the other side and watching a lot of board meetings, a lot of council meetings, I think being in a governing body is a job that you can kind of just rubber stamp, right? And so obviously, I think we'd all agree, for the ethical and moral reasons, good governance is someone of integrity and transparency. But I'll say for me personally, that the elected officials that I most look up to are the ones that really press in and really do the digging into why are we, why are we prioritizing this project? Or why is this a recurring issue? Or why are we having retention issues? So to me, I think I really admire the people that bring a level of So to me, I think I really admire the people that bring a level of, like, endurance to the role. And they don't take for granted, you know, their four-year term, right? They don't get, they don't take for granted that oftentimes, a lot of these boards are actually overlooked by a lot of people. And so putting aside the base level expectation of just ethical and moral values, which I do believe I would absolutely ascribe to and commit myself to, I want you guys to know that I'm just one of those people that will always bring my best work to the table. And I think that whether voters and residents are watching or not, you can always expect that from me and that's what I think is good governance.
What do you mean by they take their four-year term for granted? That's an interesting concept and I, I have feelings that I have, but what do you mean by that?
I think I have just watched board members, especially incumbents, basically get really comfortable and passive.
Okay, got it. I understand that. Art, you're next.
Okay, Cheyenne, what do you think are the most important personal qualities and values a board member must possess?
Yeah, similar, similar to my previous answer. I'll apply this to myself, right? I think actually being professionally qualified is something I think is very important. Actually, I was thinking about this, about elected officials. It often feels like it's two very different set of skills that it takes to get elected versus be a good board member. And it's really hard to find someone who possesses both of those. And so to me, I think, but I think that they both carry equal importance in a lot of ways because we do represent the people. And ideally, ideally, a seat like this isn't one that someone just lazily checks off at the end of their ballot, but they're actually excited and educated on who this person is and what they do, right? So I feel that a good quality of a board member ideally is someone who can do the campaigning, can interact with people, can translate what we do in normal terms and get normal people maybe even excited about what we do. Not to, you know, tout myself. I definitely think I have those qualities. But then, being a good board member, I often think is actually about trusting staff in their guidance and in their recommendations and their research. One, probably just building that trust with staff at first and then figuring out where is it your place to lean in and maybe dig a little bit more or push a little bit more for the greater good of either the public, the body, the entity, right, or the service. And so it's a little bit an out-of-the-box answer, right? I, I think that there needs to be that community service, that ability to connect with people, the communication skills. But I also tend to lean just with the professional skills, like you know how to cross-collaborate with staff. You can handle large documents like a CIP five-year plan or a three-year budget and you actually know what you're looking at. Like unfortunately, I do feel that I've been on commissions where those skills just aren't there. Or for example, a hundred-page master plan. Like, I've been unfortunately on boards where I was the only person that actually read every single page. And that's really important to me. I guess that goes back to the previous point of like, that's something you can count on me for, even if the agenda gets turned in three days before, you know? So actually, a theme I think I'm picking up on is thoroughness is really important to me. And so maybe that's a quality that I'll just end that question on.
What kind of time commitment are you able to make and what are your expectations for the time required for our board?
Yeah, time commitment. So obviously, I know we have regularly scheduled meetings. I am really grateful to be a business owner because I can control my calendar in that way, already have. I love that government has evening meetings. I think that's really important for involving working people in what we're doing. As far as like additional time, I would treat this like a part-time job. So I think 10 to 20 hours, give or take, every week. Whether it's in the beginning, like onboarding with staff and getting up to speed on the scope of all the projects that are going on, or then, you know, showing face at important events, cross-collaboration, like I think the quarterly district meetings is something I'd be really interested in. But yeah, I definitely am willing and ready to commit like a significant amount of time to ensuring that I am successful at this role and show up prepared to every meeting. And I also think you're going to find that my level of efficiency is very high. So the ROI that you'll get on my time will be very high as well.
Before I ask you the next scripted question, why did you go to Azusa Pacific University?
I went to Azusa actually because I, I got a full-ride scholarship.
That's as good an answer as you.
No student loan debt over here. Yeah, it wasn't the most prestigious school that I got into, but I, I'm the first in my family to go to college and it just felt, I'm a CFO, right? So you know, even at 18, I was looking at those rates thinking, that's insane. So yeah, fell in love with the campus, did want to go to a Christian school and the full ride. I mean, that school is not cheap.
It is a pretty campus.
So it meant a lot to me and yeah, I went to business school and studied computer science too.
Other than yourself, do you know who the most famous graduate of Azusa Pacific is?
I don't. Who comes to mind?
Christian Ekoie.
Oh, really?
You have no idea?
Nope, I don't.
He was a very good football player.
I was going to say, I think there's a famous athlete that went there. That might be who you're, that's who you're talking about.
Couple of us gravitate towards athletics, but.
Yeah.
The reason I ask that is, you mentioned it. It is a very small Christian school. It's got a tremendous curriculum and I just, I was just curious why you would go there. So the last scripted question. What do you believe are the most significant opportunities and, and/or threats facing this organization?
Yeah, so I'm kind of drawn to that SWOT analysis that we had from the Citizens Advisory Committee with that question. And so what was interesting to me from that study session was a couple of things, like the focus on customer support and sort of this debate, like bringing it in-house versus leaving it with CRNR and how that just felt like a pretty clear opportunity worth exploring as far as like priorities and the budget, right, like a full-time person. I absolutely, especially from our last meeting, like I do believe we need a better system for asset management, handling all of our permitting softwares and applicants. I think from the external perspective, Costa Mesa is known as one of the biggest headaches as far as cities to build in. And I would love to collaborate with Mesa Water and the City Building Department to make that experience better. I'm definitely concerned about all of the new housing that's coming into the city because of Measure K. And I think that it would be important to all get on the same page before the influx of all of these mega projects, you know? So I view that as like a huge opportunity, right? I'm not going to view that as a negative. And it's somewhere where I think my experience would definitely apply really well in the next few years. And also just the fact that I've been involved with Planning Commission, City Council the last few years as all of the Measure K stuff has been being, has been implemented, being explored. And then as far as threats, so I'm going to have an interesting answer here. I think a big threat to local government is apathy and the fact that people just don't know and don't care about what we're doing and all the money we're entrusted with. And it's very concerning to me, especially because I've had such a redeeming experience leaning in and caring, you know, as much as I have capacity to. And so I always feel that I'm almost in on the biggest secret ever, which is how amazing our city is and how much we do and how much we offer to the public, yet, and, and how many amazing park investments are happening, right? All these exciting things, yet no one knows about it. And no one, and, and I think pessimism is growing more and more in local government. But it shouldn't be here because I believe we have the best city ever and we have the best people running it. So I think a big threat is apathy and just the lack of knowledge that people have about what is available to them, what they are paying into. And then maybe best-case scenario, we get their input on things, you know? I'm also concerned about just, I, I also am concerned about like the Mesa Water District, like consolidation and the efforts there. I think I got really involved in their board issues because I saw a lot of behavior I didn't like. And so I would want to make sure that we insulate ourselves from anything like that in the future. Let me think if I can think of anything else. Yeah, I think, kind of just to go back to my experience working with council and on the Parks Commission, I see a lot of money, I see a lot of energy get put into beautiful plans, lengthy documents, they're thorough, they're accurate, and there is just no one paying attention. And so I'm really passionate and think even as it applies here to having the board, the board is the front lines because unfortunately, nobody else is coming to meetings. And that's true for parks too, even sometimes council. It's insane, the stuff that's just getting passed and nobody's there, you know? So I view that as unfortunately, probably the biggest threat to local government right now.
Technologically, what, what threats do you see?
So I definitely see, there's obviously cybersecurity threats. So I think that's valid. I see that in the SWOT as well. I think just waste and things falling through the cracks is very important, like that's valid as well. Lengthening out these processes and basically disincentivizing people from building in our city, I think that's a problem and that boils down to technology. Even like what I've seen on the city level is when it comes to project management, we're just not using the best tools that exist out there. Like I'm talking, you know, $20 million and ongoing CIP projects are being managed via, you know, a Word document. There are project management tools that exist out there that could help us solve a lot of problems that we were running into over there and creating a lot of problems even for like transparency with the public. So yeah, from a tech perspective, like I actually think our website is really good and I think the portal for requesting service is very user-friendly. Tessa sucks, so that's a problem. But at least asking the public to just use one bad software is better than asking them to use three bad softwares. It's my personal opinion. And yeah, with, I also think like this whole artificial intelligence topic, as it applies to government, is very interesting. It might be premature though, is, is my professional opinion as it relates to like our body here. So yeah, that's, and, and my professional background with tech is B2B softwares specifically. So I worked with government, government agencies, I worked with universities, I worked with large corporations on databases, project management tools, measuring KPIs for roles that are really difficult to measure. And then even like working on the venture capital side and being on the other side of the table assessing other products and companies, it's fantastic experience. So I'm really, I'm really grateful for that. I worked really hard to earn all of those opportunities and technology is, it's intertwined in everything we do now. You know, it's, it's assumed by residents that we are leveraging technology that's easy to use and technology doesn't need to cost a lot anymore, which is amazing. It's accessible. So I'm, as you can see, I'm very passionate about tech and we'll chip away at that eventually.
Questions for any of us?
Yeah, is there anything more about my background that you guys would like to know about? Are there any possible reservations you might be having that I can speak to or clear up for you?
Are you still on the Parks Commission?
I am still on the Parks Commission, yeah. I'm the vice chair, actually. I'm totally willing to meet with the city attorney, ask her if she believes there's any conflict of interest. I would be happy to step down. I love the work. We have really good momentum now, so if the two can coexist, I'd be really happy. But if not, that's okay. I'd gladly accept the call.
That does need to be clear. As a former Parks Commission member myself, there was a similar situation, but I was told I had to.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have Liz Dorn Parker on the board and she's on the OCC board, but I do know that in the past.
Think we all know Liz.
Yeah. But I do know in the past that it's been verified there's a conflict of interest with Planning Commission and being on this board. So I'm totally aware of that precedent.
I think it's just the Planning Commission, I think.
Yeah, I agree. So, well, I believe I agree. We haven't had the opportunity to evaluate the others.
Yeah.
But legally, you can figure that out.
In my experience, I, I don't think it matters, my opinion. So I'm already in my head, willing to sort of send this to the city attorney and let her advise us.
It is a city council-appointed position. So Ella, do you, any, can you offer anything?
We, I don't know specifically about Parks Commissioner. We, of course, have extensive experience with Planning Commissioner.
Right.
And it would be a question of whether it was an incompatible office and you'd look to the Attorney General's opinions for that. Did you say that you were on the Parks Commission and they advised you, you needed to?
Not over, not over the sanitary district, it was something else.
Okay, yeah. No, I have not had occasion to research that and that would need to be looked at. And as we know, when you accept the second office, you vacate the first if it's incompatible. So that's the way it would work.
Just put that out there in the, in the ether so that we know.
Yeah, it's definitely something I've already considered and can let you guys know in good faith. If needed, I would absolutely step down and can even, you know, pause going to the next meeting if we're still waiting on an answer from the attorneys.
I only ask that question because I'm the golf coach at the Stance and we deal with the Parks Commission for suggestions and problems.
Yeah.
That was just a personal issue. Sorry.
Anything else for us?
I think I'm good. Thanks so much and.
You for the time. Thanks for applying.
Actually, I am curious, how is this process going? So then you have your third interview and then is it just open dialogue or are you guys going to take public comment post-interviews?
It's discuss, open discussion amongst us to pick a candidate or to pick a, and I'm, we've done public comment. Will we take public comment under our discussion of it?
There should always be an opportunity for public comment that we already had in the beginning.
That's non-agenda side of us.
Oh. Yeah, if somebody had a discussion.
We'll take public comment.
Right.
It would be good to take.
I mean, it's called good governance.
Right? Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Before we bring Steve in, can we take a quick break?
Yeah.
Okay, we're back in session. And Steve, I see you've already gotten the word, we're going to have you at the podium because we are recording. Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, sir. Kind of the logistics of what's going on is we've got a set of questions that we're going to rotate through and ask you. We're open for questions from you whenever you need. We may have some other follow-up questions or whatever, but let's go ahead and get started if you're ready.
Let's do it.
First question, probably the obvious one, why do you want to be on this Board of Directors?
All right. Let me tell you a little story. So I, I've been a consultant. I went to school for civil engineering and went straight into the, the private sector. And I got my degree in environmental engineering with the intent that I'd be hoping to save the world. One of my very first jobs as a consultant was kind of as an expert witness to defend a, it was actually the polluter of a groundwater aquifer against a public utility. And I told my boss, you know, I'm not, this is not the side of things I wanted to be on. It's like, well, this is the job, this is what we're getting paid for. So I didn't leave that with a great feeling, but the longer I was a consultant, the more I realized that you did what's asked of you from, from your client. Sometimes you're on the side you like and sometimes you're not necessarily, but you do the, the best you can for your client. So I've always wanted to be on the public side, but really enjoyed kind of the, the technical side of being a consultant. And I see that this is the best way for me to kind of be on the, on the side of helping guide, you know, a public entity, protecting the environment, doing the best for your customers. And I, I see this as my path to being able to do that, but still be able to, to do the consulting work that I enjoy doing.
Well, Stephen, your personal objectives and goals for serving on the board and what do you hope to contribute?
My, my personal objectives? A little bit about what I was saying is, is to be able to protect the environment, represent my, my fellow neighbors and customers. You know, I gotta say, you guys have done a pretty fabulous job on kind of being invisible, making sure that when you flush the toilet, it goes away, you never see it again, you put your trash out on the curb, it's removed. You know, it's kind of like magic. And, well, I've, I've owned property in Costa Mesa for almost 25 years. I've never once had to think about picking up the phone and saying I'm having a sewer issue or having a trash issue. So personally, I want to see that that continues. I know there's likely some really big hurdles coming up if the, the trash industry is the same as the water wastewater one. I see that there's going to be some, some hard decisions that have to be made that are going to have serious financial impacts on what it takes to, to get, you know, to continue operating the same fashion. So I'd like to be a part of, of helping figure out how we're going to do that and providing Scott with some guidance on, on how that might happen.
Nicole?
What does good governance mean to you?
To me, it's, it's being impartial, to set your own personal objectives aside and think about how your decisions impact the community, that you're fair. And, and then you're, you follow the laws. I kind of heard some of the answers earlier and I would hope that, I think there was a, maybe there's a follow-up question about what does bad governance look like? And I would hope that Alan, yeah, general counsel, would, would help make sure that we, we stand and, you know, doing things legally. But good governance. Yeah, I think I've, I've kind of did that hopefully to, to answer the way you're looking for, yeah.
Okay. Hey Stephen, what do you believe are the most important personal qualities, values that board member must possess?
Yeah, I think kind of along the same lines, being fair, impartial, that you're open-minded. Definitely, I think listening and trusting your staff, I think is, is really important. There's, there's a reason that you've hired Scott and allowed him to hire his team. Yeah, I've been in the water industry a long time, but I obviously don't know this district as well as I know my own business. And, and then to be out in the industry and also help understand what else is going on in the world so that when these hard decisions come along, that we're informed and can help, again, make good decisions.
What time, what kind of time commitment are you able to make and what are your expectations for the time required for our board?
Yeah, so I'm already in the industry. I go to lots of the water and wastewater associations. I know that's kind of part of, I see lots of directors at those events. So that side of things kind of fits in well with what I already do. I know you meet regularly and sometimes irregularly, like this meeting. My, my home is not far, my offices, I pretty much drive right by. My son's off at school, he's going to UCLA. So, and my wife works late, so I'm kind of free in the evenings. I'm available as need to be.
Before I get to the last question, you, you're, you've got an impressive list of associations listed on your resume. What does, what do you think your involvement with those associations, how does it help you in wanting to be on this board? Or what have they given you that has spurred you to want to be on this board?
So the reasons I'm part of those associations is really more on the business side of things. That's what it's been so far. It's, it's networking, it's understanding what's going on in the industry so that when changes come, I can anticipate them and hopefully prepare so that when they happen, I'm not surprised and have the right things in place for those changes. I don't think it's a whole lot different coming from the director's side is to help anticipate what's going on. But then I think it's a little more seeing, that seems like the best opportunity to connect with other agencies and see how they're doing things and hopefully we can, we can learn from each other.
And I think the networking part of it applies to the, to us as well. I mean, we were at the Special Districts Association Conference last week and the main thing is networking and it, the networking that we do, or at least I think, I think we all do, is what are best practices that other agencies are doing that can help us? What, who are the vendors that can help you attain the, the goals and things like that? In terms of Costa Mesa Sanitary District, what do you believe are the most significant opportunities for the district? And what do you think the biggest threats we have to our, to our agency?
I think I'll start with the threats if you don't, well.
That's fine.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll start with the opportunities. Mainly, I, the reason I wanted to skip it was because I'm not entirely sure. I know that you're, you, you collect wastewater and you send it to OC Sand. I don't think the district does treatment. I suppose there could be an opportunity there to work with OC Sand, figure out how you might get some beneficial use out of that wastewater you're sending them. I don't quite know how that would work because I'm pretty sure there's another agency that handles the, the water side of things, but I bet you could work something out. I don't have a great understanding of how the trash industry works. But, but I am concerned that that's probably where one of the biggest threats are, that at some point, we're either going to run out of space for it to go or the, the, the cost for disposal is going to go up, we can't keep using the same landfills and now we have to go to Arizona or who knows where. And, and that can be pretty damaging. I guess on the wastewater side, you still have the same, same problem, that the cost for treating that wastewater isn't in your control. And, yeah, and so, yeah. And so that's a threat to, to the rates that are being paid and then your customers get unhappy. I know a lot of elected officials, I hear them say all the time, we want to keep rates down. And I guess that kind of, I haven't heard it from you guys, so, so you're okay. But that's one of the things that kind of drives me nuts is you can't keep driving rates down because then you can't do the work that you need to do. So I feel like my stance would be to, to get out to our customers that we only charge you what it takes to run the business. And the reason we raise a rate is because the cost of doing business has gone up. So I don't, I think that might be one of my personal stances.
You understand that this is to fulfill the remaining term to November or to December of next year. Would you, can, are you planning or do you anticipate running for reelection to the board if, if you're appointed?
Yes.
Okay.
The short version is yes.
Yeah, that.
As long as we all.
There's no wrong answer to it, it's yes or no.
As long as we all get along with each other and, and we're doing good things, then yes, I'd want to continue doing that.
Any other follow-up questions, anybody? Okay. Any questions for us, Steve?
I, I heard the response about why there's only three of us here. I don't, did I answer your questions to your satisfaction? I didn't miss anything? Okay, then, no?
No, these guys are, are pretty sharp. If you missed something, you'd have heard about it.
Sure.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks for the interest in applying and we look forward to seeing you in the future, one way or another.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Steve.
Nicole will.
You're not doing it. Nobody will be bringing the candidates in since it's an open public meeting? Okay, we have, thank you, thank, first of all, thank you to the, the three of you for, for taking the interest in this. I think we all appreciate and look forward to working with whoever we choose. Question was asked about public comment, so I'm going to open the segment now for public comment if anybody would like to speak. There are green card, you don't need to do it right now, but we'll need a green card from you before you leave. And if you'd state your name and where you live for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Hello, my name is David Martinez and I live in Division Five. Hearing these interviews and knowing one of the applicants personally, I can personally attest that I think Cheyenne Wright is going to be a great director for this board. I've seen her at the Parks Commission, I've seen her working with other city, city official city events. I think she's a great person, very thorough, she's amazing on parks. Every time I'm, I'm there, I'm very, I'm very impressed. And I would love for her to be my representative to this board. Thank you.
Thank you, David, appreciate it. Other public comments? All right, seeing none, I will suspend, or end public comments and open the item for discussion. Is there any discussion from anyone?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Cheyenne Wright. I think that she has demonstrated tremendous capacity for leadership in multiple roles, not just with the city, but also with local clubs. I think that she has specialized experience that we don't have here on the board that I think could be really helpful, as demonstrated by your public comment from the last board meeting. And I feel like from her interview, she has a really specific vision for the city and she's not afraid to challenge leadership, ideas, ask questions, call out concerns. So I think that's really important.
I'll make a second to that nomination. Okay, before we take a vote, I'm going to make a substitute motion to nominate Sue Lester to the Board of Directors. I may not get a second, but that's, it's hard for me to, I've been struggling all day long with, with all three of the candidates, being the fact that we have three extremely qualified people. The last time we did this, and I think we were all on the board except for Nicole. We had some candidates that looked like they had just woken up. The candidates that we have this time are exemplary. All, all three of you demonstrate a commitment that is hard to get from elected officials, like you said, Steve. It's hard for me not to acknowledge Sue Lester's dedication to this agency. Somebody said in one of the papers that she can hit the, one of the public comments, she can hit the ground running, she's very familiar, she, she's worked diligently and dedicated to this. So it doesn't look like I'm going to get a second on my motion, so we'll go back to the first motion for Cheyenne Wright, a motion by Wiltshire, second by Perry. And can we get a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please?
Director Nicole Wiltshire?
Yes.
Secretary Arthur Perry?
Yes.
Vice President Robert Ooten?
Yes.
President Michael Schaefer?
Yes. So the motion is unanimous to appoint Cheyenne Wright to the Board of Directors of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. Congratulations. And congratulations to the other. Okay, so we got that, that's part of the agenda. Any oral communications or director comments? I have one question. When will the swearing in be?
Nine, that's the ninth.
Okay, so, did you hear that? You, you will be sworn in on September. Oh. Don't drop your phone in the ocean. That, that's another story. So your swearing in will be September eighth.
Ninth.
Ninth, that's what I said, the ninth, which is a week from today at eight o'clock in the morning.
Oh, no.
And you will be sworn in to beginning of the meeting. Did I say eight o'clock?
Yeah.
That's when the flooring. Nine o'clock is our study session on Tuesday the ninth.
Diana, I have to apologize, I can't make it that day, I'm leaving town, but I'll see you at the first meeting. Yeah, that's exactly.
He gets to be, he gets to be in Brazil.
Yeah.
Or someplace like that, so. All right, any other oral communications? All right, we are adjourned.
Yeah, Mike, excellent job.